This meeting of the Livingston Parish School Board will now come to order. Ms. Teane, if you please call the roll.
Mr. Sharp.
Here.
Ms. Robinson.
Here.
Mr. Frisell.
Here.
Mr. Brad Harris. Mr. Cecil Harris.
Here.
Mr. Cox.
Here.
Ms. Cox.
Here.
Dr. Matt Morris. Mr. Lee.
Here. Okay, going on by our agenda here tonight, we have approval of the minutes of the school board meeting held on May 23rd. Are there any corrections on the May 23rd meeting? Do we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes? Mr. Brad Sharp makes a motion, and Ms. Cecil Harris seconds it. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? And there are none. Motion carries. Do we have any comment cards, by the way? Didn't think we did, but I missed them. Number three here. Discussion and action on approval of the official journal for 2024-2025 school year. Superintendent Purvis.
Mr. Lee, members of the board, I'm just requesting approval on the official journal, and that being the Livingston Parish news. That is where we post our minutes, our official and legal proceedings. And so I'm just asking for our approval for that to be our official journal for the upcoming year.
Okay, do we have a motion and a second to approve the official journal for the 24-25 year? Ms. Caitlin Cockerham makes a motion. Mr. Jeff Cox seconds. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? And there are none. Motion carries. Number four. Ratify bids received on June 4th, 2024, for Walker High School turn lanes, public roadway, and drainage improvement. McGlynn Taylor, Incorporated, profession of record Billy Taylor.
Thank you, President Lee. Yes, this is a project for right and left turn lanes off of US Highway 190 into Walker High School. We received the bids for the project. The apparent low bidder was Richard Price Contracting, had a price of $768,221. And we recommend approval, and asked that you approved the bids.
Think that something that's well needed, is that it's gonna be turn lanes right there by West Side, and between that and thing?
Walker High School, Florida.
On Florida?
On Florida, yeah.
Okay. I was hoping for something over there, too. I've done my stuff there a week, too. Yeah.
They're actually gonna be building apartments and stuff across the street.
Good deal.
I really need it.
Yeah, I think that's not going to be. Do we have a motion and a second to ratify the bids received on June 4th, 2024, for Walker High School turn lanes, public roadway, and drainage improvements? Ms. Caitlin Cockerham makes the motion. Mr. Jeff Cox seconds. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? And there are none. That motion is carried. Yes, sir. Consider, number five, consider and approve the authorization of superintendent as a member of the local ITEP committee as required by executive order number JML 2423, Office of Governor of the State of Louisiana.
Mr. Bennett, he can explain a little bit of that if you'd like.
Good evening. David Bennett, president of the Livingston Economic Development Council. We're here to discuss an approval of appointing the superintendent, or so whoever so the choose, at the choosing of the school board, to represent as the local ITEP committee as required by this executive order. The industrial tax exemption program has undergone some changes that you all dealt with for the last six, seven years. It's undergone some more. And this now takes a small committee of, there's a member of three, or a maximum of four individuals. Those will be the, either the parish president, or if it's a police jury form of government, the police jury president. It will be either the president of the school board, or the superintendent, or the, and include the sheriff or his designee. And if it's in a municipality, it will include the mayor of that municipality. So what this is, is the official proceeding to select who that representative from the school board would be. I can answer any questions, or try to as best I can. And I've got the executive order, if anybody would like to spend time reading.
Anybody have any questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, do we have a motion and second to approve the authorization of superintendent as member of the local ITEP committee as required by executive order number JML 2423, Office of Governor for State of Louisiana? Do we have? Mr. Jeff Cox makes a motion. Ms. Stacy Robinson seconds. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? There are none. That motion is carried. Number six. Consider and ratify the declaration of emergency declared by the superintendent, Jody Purvis, resulting from a fire at Denham Springs High School. Superintendent Purvis.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. So, Mr. Lee, members of the board, we had a fire at Denham High on May 26th, and so at this time, I'm asking to declare a state of emergency for the, for Denham High, for the fire. And the purpose of that is, so that we can make sure that we can get back into the building and be ready for our school to start. And by declaring the emergency, that helps us with not having to follow the timelines for bids. We will still be working towards, working from quotes, and making sure that we are being efficient, but that prevents us from having to do the 30-day, the bid laws for that. So that's the purpose behind this. So I do have to read the resolution into the minutes. In the matter of fire and destruction at Denham Springs High School, May 26th, 2024, on or about May 26th, 2024, Denham Springs High School suffered extensive damage to its property as a result of a fire. The fire resulted in damages to the walls, ceilings, floors, and other parts of the building on the campus of Denham Springs High School. Following the formalities and procedures of LSARS 382212, including the advertising and bidding for public works projects, will not allow the school board to have the repairs completed at Denham Springs High in time to start the school year 24-25. The damaged facility is needed for the instruction and education of students at Denham Springs High School, as the school is already at capacity. Accordingly, the school board must act immediately to secure contracts and authorize work on the damaged building to allow for timely repairs. As such, I find an extreme emergency exists due to the fire at Denham Springs High School that requires immediate action. Done and signed on June 3rd, 2024, in Livingston, Louisiana, signed by Jody Purvis, Superintendent. So I just ask that y'all ratify that declaration.
Thank you, Mr. Purvis. Do we have any discussion?
I just want to say, I think, you know, from a timeline perspective, if we don't do it this way, we looking at having to bring in T-b buildings and that type of thing, which we definitely don't want to do that, because that's gonna add cost to the project. So in order to get quotes, and not the bid process, we're just gonna make sure that we get the lowest price in quality work to get this done, so we can make sure all the students are, and teachers can be in the classrooms prior to August, so we can get them in the classroom. So that's the whole purpose of this.
Thank you, Mr. Frisell.
And just to make sure we're clear, this is only, we have an RFP in place for the cleaning and remediation. All of that portion is already in place, because we had that set up prior to, but this will help with the construction end of it. Okay?
Okay, with all that in mind, do we have a motion and second to ratify the declaration of emergency declared by Superintendent Jody Purvis, resulting from a fire at Denham Springs High School? Mr. Jeff Frisell makes a motion. Ms. Cecil Harris seconds. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? There are none. The motion's carried. Number seven. Discussion and action on superintendent's recommendation for the following positions. We're just gonna follow down one.
Yeah, we do them one at a time.
First off, principal at Lewis Vincent Elementary School. Superintendent Purvis.
All right, Mr. Lee, I recommend, I'm asking for approval of the performance-based contract for Ms. Susan Dernstein as principal at Lewis Vincent, effective May 7th through June 6th of '26. We had two applicants for this position. One was internal, one was external. Ms. Dernstein has been with us since 2002, but she was a teacher starting in 95. She was an instructional coach at Grace Creek, as well as an assistant principal, and now she's the, and she's currently the substitute principal at Lewis Vincent.
Fantastic. Before we vote, guys, I do know that the news had asked that if some of you tonight, we got a bunch of people that are getting this, if you're here, they would like to take a picture at the end, if you would, if you'd stay around just a little bit, and they'd take a picture and maybe get it in the paper. Appreciate that. Okay, do we have any discussion on this? Do we have a motion and second to approve the principal at Lewis Vincent Elementary School? Okay, Ms. Cecil Harris makes a motion. Mr. Brad Sharp seconds. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? There are none. Motion carries. Principal at Ly-Voc, Superintendent Purvis.
All right, we actually, we had one applicant for this position, and this, I'm recommending the approval of the performance-based contract for Gary Jones as principal at Ly-Voc High, effective May 5th through June 30th of 2026. Mr. Jones was a ag teacher at Santa Mal High, and then at Denham High, and he served as the assistant principal at Ly-Voc since 2015. So I'm recommending the approval of the contract for Mr. Jones.
Hope you're ready. Got some big shoes to fill there. Okay, do we have a motion and second to approve the principal at Ly-Voc High School? Ms. Stacy Robinson makes a motion. Mr. Jeff Cox seconds. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? There are none. Motion carries. Congratulations. All right, C, subsection C, substitute principal at Freshwater Elementary School.
All right, Mr. Lee, I'm here to recommend the approval of the performance-based contract for Ms. Amy Chaney as substitute principal at Freshwater Elementary, effective July 1st, 2024, through December 29th, 2024. Ms. Chaney is currently serving as the substitute principal, and she was a teacher from 2007 to 2012, as an instructional coach at Freshwater Elementary, and then designated at Freshwater Elementary from 2013 to 2022. So I recommend the performance-based contract for Ms. Chaney.
All right, do we have a motion and second to approve the substitute principal at Freshwater Elementary School? Mr. Jeff Frisell makes a motion. Mr. Cecil Harris seconds. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? And there are none. Motion carries. Congratulations, Ms. Amy. Subsection D, substitute principal at Maripol.
All right, I recommend the approval of the performance-based contract for Ms. Cassie Phelps as the substitute principal at Maripol High School, effective July 1st, 2024, through January 14th, 2025. Ms. Cassie is currently serving as the, in that position, a substitute principal, and prior to that, she was a teacher, as well as a designee at Maripol from 2014 through 2022. She was a designee, and then the assistant principal, 2022 to 2023. So I'm recommending approval for Ms. Phelps.
Fantastic. Do we have a motion and second to approve the substitute principal at Maripol School? Mr. Brad Sharp makes a motion. Ms. Caitlin Cockerham seconds. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? There are none. Motion carries. Subsection E, assistant principal at Denham Springs Junior High. Superintendent Purvis.
All right, there was 16 applicants for this position. 10 of those applicants were internal applicants, 6 were external. I recommend the performance-based contract for Ms. Elliot Coates as assistant principal at Denham Springs Junior High, effective May 27th, 2024, through June 30th of '26. Ms. Coates was a teacher at Denham Springs Junior High from 2006 through 2020, administrative assistant there at Denham Junior from 2020 to '23, and substitute assistant principal 2023 to present.
All right, do we have a motion and second to approve the assistant principal at Denham Springs Junior High School? Mr. Jeff Frisell makes a motion. Mr. Cecil Harris seconds. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? There are none. That motion carries. Subsection F, special, substitute special needs coordinator, Superintendent Purvis.
All right, Mr. Lee, we had two applicants for this position. Both of these, both of the applicants were internal applicants. I recommend the approval of performance-based contract for Ms. Brandy DeSalle as substitute special needs coordinator, here at our central office, on July 1st, 2024, through June, through February 10th of 2025. Ms. DeSalle is currently serving in that position, and prior to that, she was a teacher, assistant principal, as well as curriculum coordinator here in our office. So I'm recommending the contract for Ms. Brandy DeSalle.
Thank you, Mr. Purvis. Do we have a motion and second to approve the substitute special needs coordinator? Ms. Caitlin Cockerham makes a motion. And Ms. Stacy Robinson seconds. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? There are none. That motion carries also.
Mr. Lee, just a moment. For each of you out there, I didn't stop and say congratulations each time, just because we had that list, but look, we truly, truly appreciate what you do each day. We are excited. We appreciate those of you that has your families here. We appreciate that. We appreciate you for putting up with them, because we're gonna be taking a lot of their time. So we appreciate each of you. Thank you, and just know that we're here to support you.
I think the board very much seconds that.
All right.
Number eight is an addendum to ratify appointment of an interim principal at Doyle High School, effective June 4th, 2024, to June 30th, 2024. Superintendent Purvis.
So, Mr. Lee, this was just a, this is actually a interim appointment. This is not an advertised position. This is just an interim appointment, and it is a, Ms. Keller has been appointed June 4th through June 30th, and I'm just asking that y'all ratify the appointment of that position.
Okay, do we have a motion and second to ratify appointment of an interim principal at Doyle High School, effective June 4th to June 30th? Mr. Brad Sharp makes the motion. Mr. Jeff Cox seconds it. Any more discussion? All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? There are none. Motion carries. Number nine, discussion and action on the report of the Athletic Medical Staff Committee meeting held on June 3rd, 2024. And I think we were supposed to have Chairman McMorris read that, huh? You got mine? You got it? Just hand me the folder there, and I'll read it all. I knew there was a reason Dr. McMorris didn't want to show it tonight. Yeah, this is it. Okay. The Athletic Medical Staff Committee meeting of the Livingston Parish School Board, well, will be held, or was held, on, at the school board Monday, June 3rd, at 4:30 PM, for the following purposes, to take whatever actions necessary. The attendees, voting members, were Mr. Brad Sharp, Mr. Cecil Harris, Dr. Ron McMorris, and Ms. Stacy Robinson. Non-voting members were myself, Mr. Jody Purvis, Ms. Tracy McCray. Absent voting members, none. Absent non-voting members, Mr. Jeff Frisell, Mr. Bradley Harris, Mr. Jeff Cox, Ms. Caitlin Cockerham, and Mr. Pooch Jafen. Number one, we had a call to order. The Athletic Medical Staff meeting was called to order by chairperson Ron McMorris. Dr. McMorris explained, we will start with agenda items number five, six, and seven, and then go back to items two, three, and four at the end of the meeting. Number two, discussion and action for renewal of excess workers' compensation insurance. And Carmel Broad, Norris Insurance Consultants' absence, Mr. Dale Erdy presented and recommended the renewal of excess workers' compensation insurance with Erdy Agency, Star Insurance Company, with an annual premium of $91,174. After discussion, a motion was made and duly seconded to accept the renewal as presented. Motion made by Mr. Brad Sharp, motion seconded by Ms. Stacy Robinson. Voting was unanimous, and the vote was unanimous to present to the full board tonight. Also, number three, discussion and action of renewal of disaster management insurance. Mr. Dale Erdy presented and recommended the renewal of disaster management insurance with Erdy Agency, Lloyds of London, for an annual premium of $16,252. After discussion, a motion was made and duly seconded to accept the renewal as presented. The motion was made by Mr. Cecil Harris, seconded by Mr. Brad Sharp. The voting was unanimous, and was sent unanimously to the board for approval. Number four, discussion and action of renewal, for renewal of excess crime insurance. Mr. Dale Erdy presented and recommended the renewal of excess crime insurance with Erdy Agency, Travelers Casualty Company, with an annual premium of $13,084. After discussion, a motion was made and duly seconded to accept the renewal as presented. Motion was made by Ms. Stacy Robinson, seconded by Mr. Brad Sharp. Unanimously approved, and the vote was unanimous to present to the full board for approval. Number five, discussion and action for renewal of school resource officer cooperative endeavor agreement with the Livingston Parish Sheriff's Office and City of Denham Springs. Mr. Darren Viola presented the following. School resource officers, Livingston Parish Sheriff's Office. This cooperative endeavor outlines the Livingston Parish Sheriff's Office and the physical presence of the sheriff's deputies at schools in the parish. The current cost is $467,500 for 11 deputies. There are no changes to the agreement. School resource officer, Denham Springs. This cooperative endeavor outlines the Denham Springs Police Department Office and the physical presence of the officers at the schools in the city of Denham Springs. The current cost is $81,733.50 for two officers. There are no changes to the agreement. The cooperative endeavor agreements with the Livingston Parish Sheriff's Office and the city of Denham Springs are for one year, commencing on the first day of July 2024, and ending on the 30th day of June 2025. After discussion, a motion was made and duly seconded to accept and adopt the cooperative endeavor agreement of school resource officers with the Livingston Parish Sheriff's Office and the city of Denham Springs. Motion was made by Mr. Cecil Harris, seconded by Mr. Brad Sharp. Voting was unanimous. The vote was unanimous to present to the full board. Number six, discussion and action for renewal of security office detail cooperative endeavor agreement with Livingston Parish Sheriff's Officer Office. Mr. Darren Viola presented and requested the renewal of the security detail program cooperative endeavor agreement for school safety program. The sheriff's office has worked several thousand school assignments, almost exactly 3,500 across the parish, and nearly 30,000 hours providing perimeter security. The sheriff's office contributes 60%, and the board picks up the remaining 40% of the cost. We currently staff 22 slots, and these officers rotate around the parish with emphasis on schools that are more remote. There are no changes to this agreement. After discussion, a motion was made and duly accepted, seconded to accept and adopt the cooperative endeavor agreement of the security office detail program for one year, commencing on the first day of July 2024, ending on the 30th day of June 2025. Motion made by Mr. Brad Sharp, seconded by Mr. Cecil Harris. Unanimously approved. The vote was unanimous to present to the board. And I think we had, number seven, discussion and action and renewal of crossing guard program cooperative endeavor agreement with Livingston Parish Sheriff's Office. Mr. Darren Viola presented and requested the renewal of the crossing guard program cooperative endeavor agreement and Livingston Parish Sheriff's Office. The current cost is $650 per month, which is covered by the Livingston Parish Sheriff's Office. There are no changes to the agreement. After discussion, a motion was made and duly seconded to accept and adopt the cooperative endeavor agreement of the crossing guard program with Livingston Parish Sheriff's Office from July 1st, 2024, through June 30th, 2025. Motion made by Ms. Stacy Robinson, seconded by Mr. Brad Sharp. Unanimously approved. The vote was unanimous to present to the full board. At number eight, we adjourned. Motion was made and duly seconded to adjourn the meeting. Motion was made by Mrs. Cecil Harris. Motion was seconded by Mr. Brad Sharp. Unanimously approved. There being no further business before the committee, the meeting adjourned at 4:52 PM. So these, we had, these came out of committee. Do we have any discussion on these?
So on number six, you got 22 perimeter officers. Is that separate than the 11 you got in the schools? Okay. Plus the two in Denham.
Yes, Sheriff Hart and several of his staff came during our meeting and presented those things. I do want to say that we really appreciate this cooperative endeavor with the Livingston Parish Sheriff's Office. It is, it's second to none, in my opinion. Anytime you ride around our parish, you see deputies everywhere, all over our schools. We see, we do see local also. They cooperate. They cooperate with us. We cooperate with them. I really don't think we could, we could do it without their help and our help together, working together on this. It's been a very, very good program, and we appreciate y'all, Sheriff Hart, for doing that with us, and going into these agreements.
I agree. I mean, when I drop off at 8:00 AM, they're there. When I pick up at 3:30, they're there. And I think another important thing, like, obviously, safety's number one, but my son's in second, going to third, and like, he loves his SRO. Like, he, he loves cops, because he associates cops with that one guy. And so I think that's just so important, you know, for kids to grow up having that positive opinion of.
Sheriff Hart, I won't repeat everything I said at the committee meeting, for sure, but we, just to reiterate with what Mr. Lee said, we truly appreciate you and your team. It has been tremendous for us. Safety is our, you know, is a number-one priority for ours, and we, we need your support, so we want to continue to work together. And one thing that I really liked is when Mr. Lee was talking, I was watching the administrators across the room, and they were all shaking their heads like, yes. So that's very reassuring. We appreciate you, and thank you for all y'all do for us.
But also, too, I'd like to say that the athletic events, too, we appreciate your help there, because I know that's not something you have to do either, but it's not just during school hours. They're there, they're in there for all the athletic events, too. So thank you, appreciate it.
And two, as a former principal, I'm looking at Paul Goldman, and I know what he did whenever he was at my school, and I know, I know a lot of those other officers that there, the relationships that they have, that they develop with the kids, which in turn, sometimes really ends up helping out the school if we have a situation. That means a lot, I know, to these administrators, that what y'all do on those campuses every day. So thank y'all.
Sheriff Hart, the only complaint I might have ever had was somebody that called me and asked me, why we have so many police around our schools, are we having problems over there? And I said, no, it's not. That's why we don't have as many problems. It's not a problem, that they're being seen. So they are being seen, and it is working, and you know how that works.
Well, y'all hear, y'all hear all this, but then again, when y'all pick up a part of the tad, that's really big on top of all this.
Absolutely.
Sure.
All right, this report is coming from the committee, so we only need a vote. Is there any more discussion? No discussion? All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? And there are none. That motion is carried. Number 10, approval and monthly financial report update on audit findings, payment of invoices, and district supplements. Do we have a motion and second to approve the monthly financial report update on audit findings, payments of invoices, and district supplements? We have a motion? Mr. Jeff Cox makes a motion. Mr. Brad Sharp seconds it. Do we have any further discussion? All in favor, then, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? There are none. The motion carries. And I think we have number 11. Superintendent Comments?
All right, Mr. Lee, members of the board, we are in full swing, preparing for the upcoming year. The central office has probably been one of the most happening places in town the last week. I think everybody was like, was curious of what's going on in the parking. I think everybody was like, was curious of what's going on in the parking lot because we were packed all week. So pretty much all of our rooms here were filled with teachers, really diving deep in curriculum and working to make sure that they are prepared for the upcoming year. I walked around and talked to several of those groups, and it's pretty refreshing because you could tell, like, they were like in overload, and they were, this is so good. I feel like I'm gonna be so much more prepared this year. They were really diving deep in some math curriculum here in the, here in several of our rooms. We also had our administrators out, and we kind of had a kickoff event for the new evaluation system. And we are excited about the new evaluation system because it is going to include a lot of coaching and a lot of support for our teachers. So we're excited for that, and we had a really good feedback from our administrators after that event as well. Look, I will be, along with Ms. McCray, Mr. Wax, and Mr. Chafin, we will be attending the last conference, June eighteenth through the twentieth, in Lake Charles. Another, just a reminder, Mr. Jeff Taylor is hosting a parish-wide village meeting on June tenth at six o'clock at the Sheriff's Training Center. I will be out of town during that time, but we will be represented by Ms. Kim Stewart and Ms. Ashley Amy, Mr. Ling and Mr. Frisell. And I wanted to make sure all other board members knew that they were invited to attend that meeting on June tenth at six o'clock, and it will be at the Sheriff's Training Center. And the last thing that I have is we are working on a new L. P. P. S. logo, and we hope to have a draft to show you very soon. So, thank y'all.
Sounds good. Number twelve, discussion and action regarding confidential student information pursuant to L. S. R. R. S. forty-two, seventeen, seven. This item will be discussed in executive session. Are those people here?
Yes.
Okay. Then I'll need us to clear.
We have to make a motion.
Do I have a motion, excuse me, to clear, to go into executive session? Mr. Jeff Cox makes a motion. Mr. Jeff Frisell seconds. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? There are none. Motion's carried. Thank you.